Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting in West Valley City Council for this evening. We note that we do have a quorum present. We have two members of our council who are excused tonight. Councilmember Lars Nordfeldt and Councilwoman Karen Lang. They will not be joining with us. We will begin with an opening ceremony. We turn to Councilmember Hyun for that.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it very much. I did invite all of you to stand up with me and feel their presence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We do note that we have a member of the state legislature here this evening. Representative Wright is here visiting with us tonight. Appreciate her being here. And then we do have our minutes of December 3rd, a motion on the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of December 3rd?
The second.
Properly before us. Seeing no further comments, all willing to approve the minutes of December 3rd, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we go to our Employee of the Month Award. And we have Councilmember Hyun as well. We'll be handling that.
Well, thank you. And I want to invite Ken Chanson. Can you stand up a minute? Okay, thank you. And I will read this one to you. December Employee of the Month, Ken Chanson, Parks and Recreation. Ken Chanson exemplifies customer service and continually performs above expectation in his interaction with coworkers and with the public. He is the Parks and Recreation liaison for ecosystem projects. Company volunteer requests and public inquiries through the website. He is also the contact person for Enter City's uses regarding park maintenance. Add to this the support person of his team and you will have a small picture of the truly constant interruptions and demands on his time. His day starts at dawn, but he is often on the phone late in the evening answering questions. Of this, he does professionally and kindly. He responds to requests and returns with a follow-up after the job has been completed. He happily shares horticulture and landscaping tips. When there is a special event, from football practice to West Coast carnivals, he ensures that the site is clean and ready. There are so many instances where he has been invaluable that it is hard to pick just one. He simply shows up every day and gives his absolute best regardless of events noticed or weather. Kent is the one who gets it done. Can always be counted on and is truly assessed to West Valley City. So please invite you to come up, Hyun. Ken, you have family members, anyone here with you? You want to say a few words or introduce them?
I don't have family, but I do have some of my staff and some of my coworkers.
That's good. That's great. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have the Division of the Quarter Award to the Division of Arts and Culture. And that is to Councilmember Fitisimala.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my great honor tonight to acknowledge and recognize our Division of the Fourth Quarter, the Division of Arts and Culture. So this is a hefty nomination. Whoever submitted this really loves you for sure. And I think it should be hefty. There's a lot you folks should be recognized at. So I'm going to read this here, then we'll ask everyone to stand up. And you guys know the drill, right? Employees of the Division of Arts and Culture, while physically located at the Utah Cultural Celebration Center, are nonetheless spreading their influence throughout West Valley City. Recognizing that our city is home to the most ethnically diverse citizenry in the state with a wealth of untapped cultural and artistic talent, employees of this division are bringing to life the vision outlined in West Valley City's general plan. All the employees are committed to improving the quality of life for our citizens by including arts and promoting health and well-being of our residents through a variety of social, recreational, cultural, and artistic opportunities. Almost going unnoticed, this division has methodically and strategically facilitated several arts and cultural programs through festivals, theater, musical performances, and art exhibitions, not just at the cultural celebration center venue, but have taken some of these programs into the elementary, junior highs, and high schools, where students who otherwise would not have opportunities to participate can see, feel, and be inspired by the arts. The Division of Arts and Culture hosted over 1,000, over 124,790 guests this past year, sponsored over nine concerts, nine theatrical performances, provided 11 gallery exhibits, as well as 21 other exhibits and two major festivals. And that's not all. They performed over 48 community outreach programs, providing educational and arts programs to the minority communities at the UCCC venue and in schools. They even sponsored a scholarship program for students and gave away several hundred tickets for students to attend the Utah Arts Festival. The division also accommodated through their time and labor over 217 events at UCCC, as well as over 42 city-sponsored events. Finally, the division has prepared a plan for the operation of a performing arts center, previously known as the Hale Center Theater at Harmon Hall. There's a great support for the performing arts in our community and the division. The division has a proven track record of attracting major theatrical performances, including the Utah Shakespeare Festival, producing community plays, co-presenting comedy acts, as well as filming live shows at Harmon Theater, providing what our citizens want: hands-on participation, less formality, more availability and accessibility, less expensive, more responsiveness to the needs of the community. The division is truly living up to their vision statement by providing opportunities for people to learn, experience, and celebrate art, culture, and the community. And tonight, I'd ask that everyone please join us in congratulating the Division of Arts and Culture.
All right. Thank you all for coming this evening and for the great work you do. Next, we go to our public comment period. I think we have some new people tonight. We remind you that you have a maximum of five minutes, total of one half hour. And your comments should be directed just to the mayor. It is not a question and answer period. It is not a debate time. That is your time to use, to present your information, your comments, whatever you would like. And then afterwards, we may have comments from the council or not, depending upon available time and et cetera. With that then, our first person... Okay, you've got to hand me again. Why don't you just announce that person's name?
I'm going to try my best. Tira Wong Susutiro.
That would be me.
Yeah, my name is Tira Wong Susutiro, and I'm a veteran who worked full-time with the ALJ. Live here, at so long distance in this relatively rainy day. I feel like I've been harassed by a quarter force giving me a citation over two thousand dollars for fixing my vehicles on my driving. Although the parts around my house, that I can work underneath my car safely to the jack stands support. Since the first citation, I have requested many times for the hearing. My intent to work with the city to get this to them to comply, but my request was denied. I later learned at the recent meeting, because I only have ten business days to comply, but it's one quick information that I was waiting. And I mean, if I had the citation, it said 13 days. If I was mailed it with the citation, I still believe in the 13 days, but it's still 13 days. Finally, I got that the hearing today. But the hearing doesn't go well. The judge didn't want to work with me and get my citation stolen. In fact, after the hearing, it made me feel like it's my fault not to have my garage replaced or just my house didn't have a garage. And that made me feel like I'm a key offender. I don't want to work with the city to get my place in compliance, which is, I have been working with the city in 2018 to get my place in compliance successfully. But I guess this time is not, it's not what they're favored to. And the fine citation, the city is imposing on me. I feel like it's pretty cruel and unusual punishment for a homeowner who doesn't have any place to fix their vehicles except for one driving.
Thank you. Next is Doyle Griffith.
It bothers me a little bit to appear before you as often as I have, which has been a lot, but yet enough for I think you to remember me. But I think that we need to have an update as far as my condition with the code enforcement department. I won't go through the whole thing, but just to make a couple of points. I had a non-compliance certificate given to me, and I mentioned that I couldn't afford it. So I was referred to the loan department, of which I applied for and I got. It was about a year and a half process, but we finally got something going with regard to a contractor that was going to start. But in the meantime, I was going over some of the certificates, and it said that the city had a right to go on my property and abate my vehicles. And I made that comment to the contracting consultant. And so he felt like he would go to the code enforcement department and voice that. And I immediately got a phone call from Ray Morris. And he said, "Well, we don't like your opinion. In fact, it's I'm going to come over and take your cars away right away." And I said, "But the letter says I got until the 10th." And he says, "Well, then if I don't get that, then I'll go ahead and deny the contractor from going on your property until you are in compliance." So he came over and the work that he had done was taking and removing the siding from off the front, the side, the eastern and north side of the house. And so that's the way it was left. The siding was off the, there was a wrap, I think they put on it to protect it from the elements, but without siding, it was all by itself. So at any rate, when he denied access, he also denied access to the aging and process people that were going to come over and upgrade the bathroom for my wife's handicap situation and put in a ramp and stuff for my wife. And so that never has happened. And so on September, well, right near the end of September, August, that I went to court. And the court said, "Well, we'll give you until September 3rd to comply with everything that needs to be done." And so I feel like I was in compliance. And I called an enforcement officer and said, "I feel like I'd like to have you come over." I didn't get a response from him at all, so I don't know what his situation is with regard to me. I called the, a month later, the contractor hadn't showed up. So I called the loan company and said, "To attempt denying access to the contractor, I have no use for the loan." So I says, "It would probably be just as well to file the loan to go away." And so they sent me a letter saying, "We recognize your voicemail, and so you're now no longer responsible for the loan." But in the meantime, my home is in a state of disrepair, and I know my neighbor says, "When is the contractor going to come back and start doing on your home?" I said, "I don't know, because right now, I haven't even heard anything from them at all, period." And so we just feel that if anything is going to happen, it's got to come from the city council to rectify this problem and notify the code enforcement people that something has to be done rather than leave Mr. Griffith's home in a state of repair that it is. So I'm kind of leaving it up into your hands, and so hopefully that there'll be some resolution to this. I don't want the original contractor to come back, because I feel his work was shoddy and not in compliance with a lot of the things that I feel was necessary in doing what he was doing. And so it's just something that needs to be discussed and resolved, that we're in the winter and the snow is coming down and the wrap is flapping in the breeze and threatening to come off. And so it's just, and the bathrooms and the ramps and everything for my wife and the handicap situation is still there. So my time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Josh Cameron.
Hello. Thank you. Hey, I'm somebody who believes in positive reinforcement and feedback loops. I really appreciate the city council coming together to truly consider House Bill 411. I believe that you have made a sincere effort to at least understand and hear our concerns as a community, especially seeing just how pugilic the air became over the weekend. And so I really wanted to say thank you for helping me to hear those who have shown up with me, whether I look like Dee Schneider or not. And I just wanted to again express my gratitude that you at least conducted a right here as it feels a fair and sincere effort to look at the facts, figure out how we can leverage these community skills and institutional knowledge we have in order to implement some of the renewable strategies in order to clean up our area as we've seen in such a poignant way and kind of the poignant need for it we had just over the weekend. Anyway, again, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Zach Panier. Okay.
My name is Zach Parwin. I'm a longtime resident of West Valley City, having been on the Monroe Elementary West at senior high, grade your high. Although my travels have taken me far, this is always been a place I've called home. And with that sentiment, that's where we decided, my small family decided to purchase a home on 1670 Russell Avenue on November 32nd. The following day, I arrived with keys in hand to show that home off to my family, finding the property disarray with all of the outbuildings having been open and not even sure what all had been taken, including a large rollaway toolbox that had been left throughout the contract period by the seller. I reached out to both real estate agents, assuming that the families gave me the last bit of belongings, and they assured me that it was not that family. Having no idea what all had been taken, I decided to leave the loan and secure property. The following week, or that following weekend, I returned with my family to start renovations and witnessed an unending stream of traffic coming through my, across the street neighbor's house at 1653 Russell Avenue. During that weekend, just during the time I was outside, my family counted 40 people coming in and out of this home. The following Tuesday, I stopped to check on this home from my modest apartment and found all of my outbuildings are open again, and over $2,000 in tools, fishing equipment, and even Halloween decor stolen. At that time, I found an individual in my garage looting my property, who swung a two-by-four of me and then took off running. Police gave another quick sweep of the property, and as I went up to my car, my daughter had identified, a young lady who had been found in that process had ran into that same address of 1653 Russell Avenue. Police officers told me since they had not seen the individual go into the home, they did not have probable cause, and that I would have to reach out to the community engagement team, which I have since done with Councilman Hughes' assistance. This evening, on my way home, I checked this property again and again. It has been robbed and looted. All of the decorative ruck is gone. All of the lumber is gone. I no longer leave my tools there. I truck them away every evening after I do work. And rather than sit there and wait for the police to show up again, I decided to come here and address my concern with this council and with this body. In the time that I swept my property, looking to see what all had been taken, I witnessed nine people coming in and out of this home, where they're dropped off on Redmond Road in the street, scurrying down the road, running that house, and run right back out, or pedal down on their bike. Two weeks ago, I showed up to this council, not aware that I had to sign in. Councilman Hyun paired me with the police chief. I spoke to the police chief about this, who responded by knowing this address. My question to this body, which I know isn't a question and answer, is, "The chief of police is familiar with this house. How does it still exist as a dry house?" When I swept the house the day, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and I'm carrying my lumber and what she had left back into my property, I find a glass pipe associated with meth left in the driveway. This can't continue. Something has to be done, and I invite every member of this council and everyone back here to come to my home and bring their child, as I do mine, and watch this unending track, unending stream of traffic go in and out of this house across the street. It's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Visa.
I hear about code enforcement also. Mr. Griffith's case is sad. It's been going on for over six months now. Once again, it's a Mr. Morris issue. Once again, if he wasn't the ALJ and he was doing his job, any issues like this would not be happening. I'm going to talk a little bit about what the presentation last week from Mr. Morris. Very interesting how he talked about himself in the third person when it came to the ALJ. Mr. Morris commented how he's not paid to be the ALJ. But when he's doing that job, he's not doing the job that the city is paying him, over $173,000 a year salary of benefits. Mr. Morris commented about other cities. Come to West Valley, use it as an example. They come to look at the ALJ, the last one that came, I was actually there, and I walked out and talked to the two police officers and the one code enforcement employee that they had hired. And the one thing they talked about was the cases and the minor issues that were brought that were brought in. They also commented about the comments that the ALJ made and the comments that he made after the case threw over. This is when he talked about how when he lived in West Jordan, he'd get notices from West Jordan's code enforcement, and he would ignore them. They couldn't believe that the judge over cases was saying that. They also talked about the number of payment orders that were issued in those hearings. And then when we were going out, I informed them of what Mr. Morris's job for the city is. They couldn't believe that the city allowed the director over animal control and code enforcement to also serve judgment of cases in there. I've been bringing that up. It's an embarrassment to the city, some of his actions. Now I'm going to talk about the numbers. The numbers, the 14% of that he brought up, it is a misleading or an incorrect number. It is based on the notice of violations. In his presentation, he talked about how 75% of the cases are courtesy notice issued are resolved, but those 75% of properties still had an issue and a violation that a courtesy notice issued, and those numbers should have been put in there. And when you put the numbers in and you do all the math using Mr. Morris's numbers, it comes to 48.89% of the properties in West Valley City had an issue or a violation that code enforcement saw over whatever period and numbers that he used. And they commented about what citizens are complaining about. Number one, that I heard in this council, they didn't notice this. Number one before they hear. Number two was his number one, where they say, "Oh, it's a picking, choosing thing." Mr. Morris replied that, "No, that they do a whole neighborhood when they go through." That's untrue, and so they don't have time this week. Next week, I will talk about what myself and two other citizens have done in three areas and the numbers that have come up. The other comment is, they left messages for the code enforcement employee at the office to call him back on Fridays when they're not working or other times, and they get no response. The next one is, I did what, I talked to the code enforcement, I had contacted them. I did what they said to do, and I'm still being fined. If they're in compliance, they're in compliance. And that brings up another thing. He talked about not getting paid. I have a recording where he suspended a citizen of all of their fines, but then he said, "I have to charge you court costs because the city has to pay me." The fifth issue is, oh, I live in West Valley, you've heard this, I lived in West Valley City before West Valley City was a city. And now they're coming after me. I mean, there's something we got to, you know, we got to do about that. So I will do my best.
Representative Liz White.
Good night. I came again to thank you and just make reference to 411, the House Bill 411, the Community Renewable Energy Act, because I'm still encouraging and making forward and talking to some more of you about that. Again, I heard that in the committee at the Capitol. Again, I've heard that in the committee at the Capitol and I've been reading it and remembering some things as well as studying the information about it. The one thing that I want to say about it is that the thing that was discomforting to the committee of the Capitol and the legislature was that it's not a package, it's a pathway. And it was not as certain as many of the committee members wanted to hear and I'm hearing that in some of the points that are made in the study meetings. It's because it gives so many, so much opportunity for the city to look for and design and build in the right that are pertinent and specific to the city. And so the bill was not designed to be a one-size-fits-all. And it is renewable energy. I'm hearing a lot of arguments made to efficiency, which is part of the issue. So hey, we really, for the time you're spending and the thought you're giving to looking at that resolution and considering passing it and I'm looking forward to the, I think I understand that it is going to be a new agenda, possibly probably, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else here for public comment time? I think we have just four members or so. Anyone want to speak? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor's Council. The first time I've spoken to you guys, I brought up an issue about anti-idling ordinance and Mr. Christensen pointed out to me that West Valley City already has one, which was fantastic to me. Read an article this weekend of how in the state of Utah, I think there's been one violation ticket given out to someone. It was in Sandy, that's later been adjudicated, the person didn't even have to pay. Nothing is being done to clean our air. 50% of the pollution and the inversions that we deal with come from exhaust pipes. I see the, in the article, it says that it's hard to find these cars, hard to find where they're at to get these people that are idling. As I stated last week, I'm on the school community council for my daughter's elementary school, Rowland Meadows, just down the street. I have a squad car, go down there in the morning at the beginning of school. There's 50 people you can hand a warning ticket to. Show up again at 3:45 in the afternoon when they come to pick up their kids, 50 more warning tickets. We can start finding these people and creating a culture of no idling our cars in West Valley City. And that's just one elementary school. We have a lot of elementary schools and those children, my daughter, are the most vulnerable to what we're doing to our air. So along with everyone else pushing for HB411 and renewable energy sources to power us, let's clean up the air where it counts the most right now and that's coming out of our exhaust pipes. Thank you.
Thank you. With that then, is our half hour up? Okay. Then we'll close the public comments. City manager, any follow-up comments? No, sir. Council members, any follow-up comments?
I personally, well, I think you're going to say mayor, but I think personally we're going to look at the case, the 1670 Russell Avenue, Zach Pau. I will let you do that and then we can jump in. I can jump in.
As I go through here, a number of issues have come up. The HB411, of course, will be on our agenda next week for action. There's already been some discussion of that, so we're in that process, so we will not add any more on that to our agenda. Ordinance enforcement was specifically a couple of, we did have some items of individuals. We refer them to our staff to come during the day and meet with them and follow up on that here. The one on the, again, a specific one on the property problems and with the nearby home where there were some problems. Councilman Hughes, were you going to follow up on that?
Which one you're talking about? The one?
Yeah, this Zach.
Yeah, I will do that.
Yeah, because typically when it's a specific case, we have that go through our staff. If it is a change in policy or a request to adopt a new policy or modify an existing one, then we will typically have that discussion on our agenda in the following meeting unless it's something that we've recently discussed and already made decisions on. And so I don't see anything here we're going to add for policy purposes on our agenda unless someone sees that differently. But there are a couple of items here we will follow up on. For example, Mr. Griffith, I thought that one was resolved, but we'll work that out later individually rather than here in council meeting. And the same with Mr. Pau, same thing, so we'll take a look at those. With that then, we're going to go on with our agenda. Before we start our resolutions, I will make a couple of statements. One, I will provide a brief summary of the item. However, each of these have additional supporting documentation. Anyone can access it electronically on our website where more complete details are provided. For example, we'll be talking about a lease arrangement. Obviously, a lease document can cover, you know, 50 to 100 pages and details are there for any of our interested citizens to be able to go and look at that and see. I will merely refer to a couple of key items on it as we present it. We have already discussed these items in a previous council meeting, so typically there are not a lot of questions, so it's fairly routine at this point, as are most of the items that are on our agenda. So if we don't ask a lot of questions, it should not surprise people since we asked most of them last week, just as we asked earlier this evening for all the items that will be on our agenda next week. So we will first address Resolution 19-164. This is to authorize the city to enter into a financial agreement with what's called a master tax exempt lease purchase agreement. We've done these repeatedly with US Bancorp government leasing and financing. This is for the purchase of some good computer equipment. We actually do this on a regular basis. We purchase the equipment and it is then paid off over a period of time. Now first, we will address obtaining financing and revenue for these particular computers that we will purchase. It's a four-year lease with quarterly payments. The interest rate is 2.36% and the city will own the equipment at the end of the lease term. So since they are still very competitive and it fits within our authorized budgets, then we are proposing that this particular lease agreement be approved. If it is approved, then our next resolution will approve the purchase of those computer items with the revenue from this lease. That being the case then, I will make that the introduction for Resolution 19-164 and turn to the council for any further comments or motions.
I move for approval, Resolution 19-164.
Second. Properly before, any further comments? And by the way, we've done this multiple times, every year at least, even more than that. So to our city recorder, thou for the roll call vote as required in state statute.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Hughes.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. By the way, that particular authorization was for $157,000 plus, not to exceed that amount. And now we will go to Resolution 19-165, which is for the purchase of those computers financed through the lease purchase financing contract with US Bancorp. This will include laptops, docking stations, monitors, and it's done through a state purchasing contract through, so we have competitive pricing, we have favorable terms. Those lease, the purchase, you will notice for slightly less than that, there are financing costs with the lease purchase item, but the actual purchase of those is for $150,724. With that introduction then, to the city council.
Move for approval of Resolution 19-165.
Second. Properly before, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hughes.
Aye.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 19-166. This is to approve the purchase of what is referred to as digital signage. This will be from technology providers and it will be used in our cultural celebration center. The cost on this is $31,720. The source of those funds are from a grant from the county for work being done at the cultural center. So that you understand, this is for signage within the Utah Cultural Celebration Center building. And it will have displays as to room assignments, where things are located, you know, anything that might have to do with a convention being held there or any other information like that. So and that will be, that's typical for most places that rent out their facilities and we do rent out our facilities some to conventions or groups that are having activities there. So it's just bringing this up to a little bit higher standard and we have those funds available. And that will make it easier for those who are attending those to know where room assignments are for classes or for whatever they might be doing there. So that's probably enough introduction on that. To the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 19-166.
Properly before, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hughes.
Aye.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That completes our scheduled work for this evening. We thank you for coming this evening and we will now close our meeting and adjourn for the evening until next week.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Pass unanimously or adjourn. Thank you.